Yeah, we had that gap insurance.
All right, it is six o'clock. I'll call the work session to order and I'll turn the floor over to you, Tom.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. It's an honor to be here tonight, as always, to be able to address the council. I want to recognize tonight that we have our Public Works Director, Cody Dill, and our plant supervisor, Bud Dominique with us. And as we go through things tonight, if there's operational questions or questions about the physical side of the line, we will have them respond to those questions. So, tonight, we are here so that we can consider the rates that residents pay throughout the city of Rawlins for both water and for sewer. Our present reality is shaped by our past. Whatever has kind of happened in the past historically has kind of shaped where we're at today. And this is especially true within the city of Rawlins. Historically, our water and sewer systems, for the last 20, 30 years, have presented us a continuous challenge to keep them operational, to keep them maintained in good working order. Our water and sewer funds are multifaceted as to the operational requirements. Each of the two systems has three different aspects that we need to consider. One is the capital investment that we have within the water system, the sewer system. Second is, from year to year, our operational costs that we have to maintain the systems and the work and the dollars that go into the maintenance and to the salaries and the operational things. The third aspect of these two funds, as well as everything that we do, is the financial aspect. And usually, the financial aspect is in the background. It comes in the form of an audit report to counsel at the end of the year, or at different monthly reports. And we really need to give attention to all three of these aspects that we have when it comes to our water line. If we do not on all three, we're going to end up with issues with things. And after analyzing these aspects, the city staff has determined that our systems right now are at a crisis point. And I feel that it's time for the city, the community, the residents, and everybody to come together to resolve this crisis that we're in and that we are looking at over the next few years. Our water system up at the springs is upwards of 100 years old. Some of the pipeline that we have, as we've talked, is still wood stave. The transmission line on the way to town has several issues with it. Most of the blow-off valves that we have are non-functional. The cathodic protection, there's just a lot of issues that we really need to consider and that we really need to come together to find ways to resolve. And the best way, I think, to look at this is to look at our future. And what do we want to leave for our kids in Rawlins and for the future of Rawlins? And I think we really needed to take that into account and see what we can build and how we can come together as a city, as residents, as all of those different things. So, where I would like to begin tonight is you will have in front of you a water rate recommendation book that we have put together. And what I would like to do is, from a financial standpoint, I want to go through and show to you tonight in here what the financial condition of the water fund and the sewer fund is. So, it's a little bit different approach than talking about the line itself, the operational cost. What I want to share with you to start off with is the actual financial condition of the water fund and of the sewer fund. And so, if you will turn first to page three, and I'll let you at some point read the rest of the narrative that I have on pages one and two. There's a few things here that I'd like to share with you. Currently, on the water transmission line that we have, we currently have four grants that we are looking at. Two of them are through the ARPA program that we've received from the SLIP board. One is a state MRG grant, minerals grant, and one is a community development block grant. And so, the first grant is $735,000. And what that is, is a match that we have for the design and the engineering of our transmission line in the springs. So, before we can identify a project and match funding sources to our project, we have to have our project defined. We have to go through and say, this is what our project is, this is where we need the funding. And so, we are currently working through engineering firms to come up with a design and the engineering of the transmission line in the spring boxes. And we have 735,000 of ARPA funds. That is a match towards that. And our match, this was a 49% match, our match is 51%, so it's just under 800,000. And the second grant is 675, an MRG grant from the state. And we have received permission from the state, and we've used that grant as a match for the 735,000 ARPA grant. And so, the difference will have to come out of the water fund or the general fund. We received last fall 917,000 of an ARPA grant for the Sage Creek Basin and Junction Boxes replacement. We believe that we have that on schedule for this summer, late into the summer, to start that work. But that is out on an RFP right now, so we are soliciting engineers to help us with that. And then, the last one is a community development block grant to help us with our SCADA system. And that would be a replacement of the SCADA. Right below that, what you will see is we've taken the projects that we have throughout the water system and through help of our outside engineers, we have classified projects as either priority one or priority two projects. Priority one projects are essential, that these items are remedied or done as soon as we can to maintain the integrity of the transmission line. And how they have these broken out, there are six different projects that we have identified. And then, as you go across the page, you will see the funding sources for those. So, priority one projects totaled $28 million. The general fund or the water fund, depending where we go, according to our estimates, will have to fund about $2.5 million. We are looking for loans, either through the USDA or the SRF, the drinking water. And as you can see there, we're estimating right now about $16 million that we would have to finance on priority one projects. Principal forgiveness through these programs, that there will be a certain portion of the loans, especially through the SRF, the drinking water, that will be forgivable over time as you go. And so, we're just estimating at this point, we think about 4.8. WWDC will help us, we believe, with our storage tanks at Tank Farm. And then, the SLIP grants that we have talked about and the community development block grants. So, anyway, priority one projects are about $28 million. If you turn to page four, you will see a listing of our priority two projects. And if you look at these projects, you will see that these projects are also very essential. These are not things that we can put off for a matter of years. These really need to be looked at as soon as we can. So, the total of the priority one, priority two projects is $42,237,000. So, from our research and our estimation, that's our need that we have. Now, to go through the balance sheet categories with you, just a summary, I have taken these numbers off of the audit reports for the last five years. So, these numbers that you are viewing here are audited numbers. They're not created by the financial office or anywhere else. So, you will see within our cash reserves that we have $2.5 million in total. The investments category here is a result of a loan that we took out through the state of Wyoming for repairs. And I'm not sure if exactly which loan it was, but I know it's a covenant of the loan, that we invest enough money so that when the repairs start to age out, we have the funds to do those replacements. So, the state mandated through a covenant of the loan that we fund future replacement of what that was. And that's the same concept that we should look at within the water fund for the remaining assets, is over time, as they depreciate out, we have cash reserves to fund. The cash amount is 1.2 million. That's what the water fund was holding as of June of last year. Included in that amount, if you remember back, is an interdepartmental loan to the general fund. So, when we did the Sage Creek Springs Phase One, that has been complete, where we replaced 10,000 feet of wood stave, the general fund loaned the water fund, it was $812,000. So, if you remove that, as if we had paid that loan back to the general fund, we would have cash on hand of about $426,000. In the water fund, that represents about 63 days' cash on hand. Without revenues coming in, we could only operate our operating expenses for 63 days, and then all of the funds would be depleted. We'd be forced into debt at that point, just for operations. So, anyway, where should cash reserves be at if we were at our goals or to reach the needs that we have? One is, is that we need to have an emergency fund amount that we set in there of like a year's worth of expenses. And then, second of all, we should have cash reserves set aside for fixed assets, for the replacement of the capital. And right now, the accumulated depreciation in the water fund is $38 million. And if we would have funded that over time and had that here, we would not be looking at debt and we wouldn't be looking at any of these things. We would have our system maintained and repaired through the funds that we received through water rates that should go towards operations and future maintenance. So, I would say that we should have about $40 million in there over the history of the water fund, over time. But we are down, like I said, without the interdepartmental loan, we're down to about 62 days' cash on hand. If you look at the capital asset section on page five, this will show to you where our capital situation is with our water fund. Now, what I found out through looking at this is that our depreciation schedules of the city only record items that were purchased after 1950. So, if you go back into the Sage Creek, Beaver Creek basins, all of that would have been pre-1950. And there are major lines through town that we know that are older than 1950. So, when you look at the accumulated depreciation here, you should take that into account, that a lot of the assets that we have pre-1950 are not included in this report. And we know that that number is sizable. But anyway, we have about $69 million of historical cost. And we have $38 million in accumulated depreciation over the years. So, that leaves our net capital assets at about $31 million. Now, if you look from 2019 to 2023, you will see under the historical costs that we have invested in our water system, the difference between the $69 million in '23 and the $63 million in '19. So, roughly $6, $7 million we have invested into the water fund. The issue is, you look at the accumulated depreciation, in which we estimate the wear and tear and the use on the water system, it has grown at a larger amount than our investment. So, if you go over time with this, eventually, depreciation will win out over reinvestment. And at some point, we're going to have no value in the water system at the current pace that we are. And if you go back through history, you will see that this has held true for many, many years, that we have not reinvested and that we have not put the cash away to reinvest in it. And so, what you see here today is capital assets of the water system that are aging, and they're not being replaced basically in a timely manner. And if you look at the current condition today of our line, the physical line, you will also see that that has held true with that. And that's why we have about $40 million in items that we have to look at. On page six, at the top, you will see that about 55% of our recorded assets are depreciated out. We are past the midpoint of the life of our water system. And at the rate that it is going, you know, that percentage is increasing, it won't be long until our system will not function at the rate that that is going. And it really needs investment into it. At the bottom of page six, you will see the projects that have been done over this period since 2020. And there are sizable projects that have been done. Most of them, as you can see, are through grants, through the state. But what I will show you in a minute is, is that most of those have been done through loans and through debt. But anyway, the Sage Creek Basin Phase One was about $2 million, and that was the latest large project, and that was 10,000 feet of wood stave up in the Sage Creek Basin. Okay, so if you flip to page seven, you will see at the top there, basically, a graph. The orange line in the center is the accumulated depreciation. If we were funding for this, the gray line, that's really hard to see at the bottom, it looks like it is the axis, that is our unrestricted fund balance. Those are the funds that we have to invest in it. So, you can see, over time, the funds that we're having are going lower and the accumulated depreciation is growing. Also included on page seven is a summary of our long-term debt in the water fund. And as you can see, over time, we have secured seven different loans for projects associated with the water fund. If we would have had sufficient cash reserves, these loans would not have been necessary. But over time, our needs came about, and the only access to funds was through debt. And as you can see, we ended up on the books today with seven different loans. And if you look on page eight, you will see between the current portion and the long-term portion, we have about $4.6 million in debt for water fund needs. And if you take the $4.6 million, again, against our cash reserves, we aren't even 5% funded towards that debt. So, we are forced to take operations. And through rates, we have to earn enough each year through charges to customers and through rates to cover our debt payments. We don't have the cash to do that. And when we go to get loans for the water fund on the priority one projects, this is going to be a risk that the lenders will see, is the amount of debt that we have compared to our cash. All right, if you go to page nine, in here, I have the traditional balance sheet for the water fund. Today, it's called a statement of net position. And what I would want to show here is, we've already talked about our cash, and we've talked about our capital assets and our long-term debt. The number that I would like to point out on here that is significant is, in June 2019, if you go to the second from the bottom line in that statement, you will see unrestricted. What unrestricted funds are, it is the cash in the bank that does not have a, that has not been earmarked or has to go to some liability, you know, that's like spoken for, taken. It's the unrestricted portion that, if you had to spend, that's what you would have, you know, just on the unrestricted. And as you can see, from June of 2019, that was nearly $2 million. On the audit report for June of '23, it's down to $117,000. So, even though we have the cash in the bank, you take everything against that, down to the unrestricted part of that, it's about $117,000. You see the graph below, and that shows the decline in the unrestricted position there. If you turn to page 11, this is the traditional income statement. Today, it's called something different today. I don't know the exact term. But anyway, this shows our income and our expenditures. And if you go halfway through that statement, you're going to see a number there that's called net income from operations. That's our actual operating income, or with brackets, it's our operating loss. So, that is our operating expenditures, no capital, just the operating expenditures against our operating income. And if you add that up throughout the five years, it's about a $1.9 million loss in the water fund over time. A couple other large numbers that you will see here is transfers in, under the transfers column. What that number represents is, at certain times, other funds besides the water fund will purchase water fund assets or capital. And so, in June of '23, through the Sixth Penny, through Walnut Street, there was some water infrastructure that was purchased. So, we have to recognize that essentially as income in the water fund, as a transfer, so that we can capitalize it up on the balance sheet. And I'm not sure in June of 2019 what that transfer was. I would assume it was another Sixth Penny purchase. But also, in 2023, is impact assistance that is going towards pretreatment. I know that's also included in there as in progress. So, anyway, you can see what our income and our expenditures over time has done. In 2023, some of the expenditures there have come from the revitalization of the pretreatment plant, in that the engineers came out of impact assistance, but a lot of the repairs that we did to the electrical panels, valves, and those things came through the water fund. So, if you see that loss is large, a lot of that would be the result of pretreatment, getting the plant ready through operational repairs. And we feel that that is, at this point, functionable, but there are still repairs that need to be made. We find every day, because of the age of the plant and how long that it's sat idle, that there's just different things, you know, that have to be repaired and replaced. If you turn to page 12, I can review with you real quickly the revenues that we've had through the water fund. So, if you go back six years ago, to fiscal year 2019, you can see the actual amounts that we received through the water fund monthly, and this comes off of our general ledger, up through February of 2024. And the four numbers that are in red, that you will see there, are pulled from fiscal year '23, as if we had parallel activity, which we don't know for sure, but that's just kind of a placeholder to come up with what we estimate our revenues to be for this year. In November of '22, which would be under the, it would be under fiscal year '23, November, you'll see that it jumped from $145,000 in October to $221. That increase is a result of the rate increases that were passed in November of '22 through the water rate study that was performed by Carl Brown. And then, you will see a sizable increase from years past as you go forward. From fiscal year '23, July, which would be July of '22, in fiscal year '23, you'll see a sizable increase to July. In fiscal year '24, of July of '23, we were on water restrictions during those summers. In July of '23, we were on water restrictions during those summer months. So you will see a large increase at that point. So what I am trying to show with this overall schedule is that for fiscal year '24, we believe that our revenues will be about $2.8 million through charges to forward services. Okay, and I will use that number in the back to show certain proposals for increase in rates. But I want you to know that's where that number comes from. If you go to page 13, that's just a summary of our staffing. I wanted council to know how many individuals, FTEs, we have in these different areas. You will see an increase of two staff in fiscal year '25, and that is for the pretreatment plant, when that becomes operational for longer periods of time. We just don't have sufficient staff to run the regular plant and the pretreatment plant. When we tried that in fiscal year '24, we were burning people out pretty quick. So that's the addition there. Pages 14 and 15 are going to show you the three departments within the water fund, the expenditures through water utilities, water treatment, and water pretreatment. You can see what the employee benefits are, what the contractual services are on page 14. And if you go to page 15, you will see the materials and supply budgets that we currently have for fiscal year '25, but those numbers have not been accepted yet by council through the adoption of budget. So these are estimates. And if you look back through prior years, they are pretty close to prior years. So we feel for what we're doing tonight, those are pretty close estimates. If you go to page 16, what we have within the water fund is we have two different needs for capital. The first need we've discussed through our Priority One and Priority Two projects on the transmission line. But once the water is fed into the city infrastructure, the in-town infrastructure, we have a lot of needs there within the town with the infrastructure. There again, our infrastructure within town is just aging. It's just over time, it has aged. And we have, how many water breaks a year, water leaks?
Twenty-five in this year.
Twenty-five so far in three months. So that's on pace for well over 100 in a year's time. So it is aging. And a second thing to consider here is, is that it, is that clear back in 1991, Congress passed a lead and copper rule. And what that rule is, is that any lines that carry water must be free of lead or copper. And over time, we have began that inventory throughout the city. Now, the main water lines throughout the town, you know, that come from the plant are free of lead and copper. But anything that's ancillary to that, that comes off of that line, there is lead or copper, is it both? In, within those lines. And according to the lead and copper rule, they must be replaced at some point that the government has set that deadline for. And so to date, we have not, you know, we've inventoried that. The inventory is due in October to the federal government, so we have inventoried that. We're on the verge of completing that. But we have identified several areas where those lines must be replaced in town. And if you look through here, over nine years, the amount of capital for in-town infrastructure that includes lead and copper as well as other work that we have to do, right now it's estimated about $19,500,000. And I'm sure with inflation over the years that that will climb well over 20,000, or 20 million by the time that we get there. But you can see the nine-year average, $2.1 million. And if you go back to our operating losses that we're having and our cash reserves and those things that we just went over, we do not have the funds right now for any of that. The lead and copper, we have been, I want to say promised, guaranteed by the federal government that they will help us with unprecedented funding for help with the lead and copper. But here we are, within six months of the deadline of the inventories. That has not been defined yet. So right now, I'm not sure that we can say that we can count on any of that at this point. If you go through pages 17 through page 25, you can see all of the in-town infrastructure projects that we have planned, as well as other capitalized items that are needed, either for distribution or for the treatment plant. So that is our nine-year plan. '24, we're in, so it was 10. But, so what we have here is the future nine years of our plan. So you can see what those projects are. You will see under some of those, like the equipment distribution, you'll see a dump truck for $30,000. If you go throughout the years, it's in there each year. It is just saving $30,000 each year until we reach roughly $150,000 and can purchase the dump truck. So if you go through there and see some of those numbers and you think, ah, it can't be right, no, that's just putting it aside for that purchase down the road. On page 26, middle of the page there, you will see the financial ratios that the, for the water fund off of the financial information presented. And the reason that I put these in is that to manage financial funds, it is an analysis of ratios. But that shows you your trends over time. It shows you your ability to pay debts. They are critical to maintaining your financial health, to monitor those and to work with those. And as you can see, the current ratio, which is current assets divided by current liabilities, that shows you your ability to make your payments, you know, over time. And you will see that that has decreased 1.73 over three years. So that just shows that the resources that we have to pay the bills are depleting throughout the system. We, you know, over time, when that hits zero, you don't have any resources. You're into a deficit position. Cash ratio is your cash balances to your short-term liabilities. You can see that drop. The debt ratio in here is going up, and that's the result of increased debt compared to resources to pay that debt off. So our debt is growing faster than our ability to pay that debt off. And over time, you are forced to take action of some sort to pay those loan payments. And as you go through those other ratios, you can see in there return on asset ratio that over time, our assets are playing less of a role in our revenue that we have. Debt to equity is going up because our equity has dropped from our losses and our debt's increasing. So those, to me, are the main six ratios that we need to watch over time. On page 27, what I have done here is I put an estimate amortization schedule together for the amount of debt that we need for our Priority One projects. And if you look at page 28, that's the actual amortization schedule. What we would be looking at is $20 million in debt at a 2% interest rate over 40 years. Most of the SOF funds USDA is roughly at about 2%, but I think over time, as interest rates increase, I believe this will also increase. But if you just go with those factors, we would need $731,000 a year to make debt payments on the transmission line. Now, I have three different scenarios again. I was asked to bring a scenario as to what it would take to fix this. And so I have that, and then I have a couple other scenarios to help us ease into that, you know, that isn't as sharp upfront. And so for all scenarios, I've used the revenues that we went through in the revenue section and the operating expenses showing here. And at this rate, we would have about a $468,000 income right now with, on just the operating side. Okay, and that's no inflation, that's just the budgets that we've put together. On the operating statement, the income and loss statement, the reason that it's so much lower is depreciation expense that goes into the calculation of income. That's not in here. This is just purely operating revenues on a cash basis in and cash basis out. So we would have $468,000 of income. The first scenario on page 30 is going to be, what would, what percentage would we have to increase water to cover all the expenditures that we talked about? And if you put in $2 million, that was the in-town infrastructure off of the projects list that we had before, $2 million, capital replacement was $428,000, the debt payment of $731,000, that would give us a net decrease in cash of 2.6, 2.7 million. In order to cover that, we'd have to increase the rates roughly 92% to raise 2.6 million to cover that. Under scenario two, the one thing that we added into there would be to, is that we would either receive $500,000 in a lead and copper grant, or we would have to cut $500,000 out of the capital that we have. We'd have to do one or the other. That would be about a 75% increase in rates. And scenario three, maintain the half a million dollars for the lead and copper, but we reduce the debt payment by three-fourths, so that there's only one quarter of the debt payment in there. And the reason that we would do that is that we feel in fiscal year '25, we would not incur the entire amount of the 20 million. We think that we would incur about 25% of that debt. Over time, it wouldn't be an all-at-once. So if you reduced the debt payment down by three-fourths from where it's at, it would come to about a 56% increase in rates. And so our recommendation on this, of course, would be as low as we can. And it would be roughly a 50%, 56% increase in revenue. How we would obtain that would be an 80% increase in the monthly fee that is there and a 33% increase on the cost per thousand. We feel that keeping the cost per thousand low would be the best strategy. We've looked at other cities, and they have kept the cost per thousand low. And at our rate with 33% with the ones that we've looked at, we would be near the top in that. We're not at the top with the ones we looked at, but we would be nearing that. So to go 56% across the board, we feel would put the cost per thousand out of reach. Anyway, if you go to page 32, that's just my calculation. On the top grant, you will see the meter sizes that we have and how many citywide, how many of those meters that we have. So we feel that with the 0.625 meters, that with 3,208 of them, if we increase it, that amount, it would, we would raise about $2,420,000. As you go down, the cost per thousand, and that would be the total revenue. And then the last item that I would show in here are the rates on page 34, as if they were increased by those amounts. That's what the resolution and the rates would look like. In-town is on 34, the outside, the corporate limits is on 35. And then we have rate comparisons to other towns on 36 and 37 on there. So, so to close on the water rates, I believe what this report shows and the financial condition of our water fund right now, I feel that it is essential that the rates increase. Now, if you go back over, you know, it's, well, it's hard, I know, to increase the rates. And to put that burden onto the residents, it's a hard ask. It really is. But I truly feel at this time, that as a city, the residents, the city workers, I really feel that we need to come together to find solutions for this problem. I don't think turning a blind eye to this or hoping that it either fixes itself or it just doesn't break, you know, hoping that it doesn't break, that's going to catch up with us. I really truly feel that that's going to catch up with us. And we have 8,200 residents roughly in the city of Rollins. I feel that we just have that responsibility to provide this to the residents in the best manner that we can, you know, the most cost-efficient way. But I think for residents of the city, for everybody, this is a hard ask. I am not going to deny that this isn't, and it has kept me up at nights. But you look at the condition of our financial side, our transmission line, and we are in a crisis. It is time that we come together and we carry our end of the load to fix this. And I know that's a hard ask, but if we, if we don't come together at this point, it's just a matter of time on our transmission line until it's going to fail. So anyway, that's on the water side. Real quickly, about 10 minutes, you have one on the sewer. Rate recommendation. And I will tell you now, we'll just hit on the highlights. I believe that the sewer fund financially is in a worse position. I believe that the sewer fund financially is in a worse position than the water. I'm just going to tell you as we go into it that it is. The issue with the sewer fund is the projects are about the same as the water, but we only have a portion of the revenue that the water fund brings in. So we have to make those funds go a lot further with the same projects. So if you look on page two real quick at the cash and investments in the sewer, they have dropped from one point five million down to seven hundred and eighty-five. Here again, there is a loan to the general fund. Let me find the amount, it seems like it was four hundred, four hundred and seventeen thousand from the sewer fund to the general fund. So if you look at the seven eighty-five, reduce that by the four hundred, we're down below three hundred thousand cash in the sewer fund. Capital assets, you will see the exact same thing that happened in our water fund is that the net capital assets after accumulated depreciation has decreased to half a million dollars. So there again, our system is aging faster than we are replacing it. Let's see, if you turn back to page four in here, if you look at the sewer projects that we have, that we have identified as critical needs, we have thirty-one manholes at about ten thousand each that just have to be replaced. It's about three hundred and ten thousand. We have sixty-four thousand feet of sewer line that has been identified at about sixteen million. New manholes for sewer that aren't replacements, that are new ones, about two point one, you add the design work, and on the sewer fund to keep it functionable, you're looking at about twenty-two million dollars in projects. A couple other just facts that we came up with. About forty-three thousand six hundred feet of our sewer lines are partially plugged, which means that there is obstructions throughout the line, it's not stopping it, but they are partially plugged, and sixty-four thousand feet are in poor condition. And that's just because of age over time. The lines and things have just aged out. We have had a study done by R. H. Borden, and they came in and tested our sewer lines. And we have essentially a map of what they have found with that as to what either, you know, was in good, poor, whatever condition. And I just wanted to show that over five years, we do maintenance on the entire sewer line, but you can see the different, which I don't know the areas, but I just wanted to show that over five years, we do go out and do maintenance on those lines. R. H. Borden will come back this summer on the areas that we worked on, and they will retest that to see if it improved, if the line collapsed, or whatever happened with our maintenance. So we are monitoring that each year to see if we could get, you know, our sewer line back into really good functioning condition. The storm sewer inlets, we have seven hundred and sixty-eight of those. Five hundred and fifty-one of them are in good shape, that's the word that they used in the report, but they are in good condition. Eighty-four of them are unacceptable, which they say are okay. Forty-eight are in bad shape, and eighty-five are in need of replacement. On our sewer projects per year that we have through twenty-four through twenty-eight, all those costs that we have, if we break that twenty million down over the years, you can see what we're looking at in each of those years. And we are looking at anywhere from seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars clear up to about two million dollars in projects each year. There again, currently, we do not have the resources to even attempt any of this right now, the resources just are not there. And so we are going to ask for rate increases, you know, for this.
I just had a question.
Sure.
On these numbers, are these including the six penny projects as well? If that was taken care of, is that cost included in this, or is that subtracted out?
I don't think we're taking into consideration.
This is just the total system, right?
I think if we did six penny projects, it would actually help us out in response to lower the cost in certain areas, but then be a pretty small percent, especially with the streets are allocated.
I was just hoping that maybe some of the areas that are the worst offenders, that costs is the most, were part of that six penny that we did. You know, one of the adds that twenty-two million, maybe eighteen or something, yeah? So I was just curious.
Definitely factory building, you get a guy there, bring these costs down a little bit.
Okay, on page seven, we have one note payable in the sewer fund that we have, and it totals about four hundred and five thousand. Down on page seven below, you can see the traditional balance sheet that we have, and you can see there that the unrestricted net position has, it has been cut in half over five years. You can see that in graph form on page eight, how it hit its peak in two thousand twenty, and since then it has dropped. You can see the financial ratios on page eight, and interestingly enough, the current ratio has actually improved in the sewer. The reason it has improved is that we have paid off debt in there. We've taken a couple of those loans and we have paid those off over time. So that has improved our current ratio as well as our cash ratio, and it also has improved the debt ratio. So on that, our ratios is improved by removing that debt out of there. You can see the traditional income statement on page nine, and you can see that most years we do have earnings from operations. The operations is usually positive in there. Our interest expense and our transfers out is what really decreases the net position. The transfers out in here is that the repairs to the vehicles, equipment is done at the central garage, which is included in the general fund, those costs, and so the sewer fund and the water fund would transfer money over to cover those repairs. So anyway, that's the income. I have the same on page ten like we did for the water. You can see the revenues for the sewer over six years. You can see that basically due to water restrictions, since our corporate rate is tied to the usage, you can see that our revenues have actually dropped over the years because of those restrictions. And we have not had an increase in the sewer funds throughout this six-year period. There is a staffing summary, we have the contractuals and the supplies, materials like we do on the others. And then on page thirteen, we have kind of just a statement here that if we were to ask for rate increases on what we need in the sewer fund for twenty-five, you can see the operating expenses, transfers, all that consistent with the revenues, we would need about one point eight million dollar increase of cash into the sewer to handle those projects that we identified for twenty twenty-five. And if we were to go with that scenario, that would be about a hundred and eighty-one percent increase in rates to raise enough revenue to cover that. What we are asking for is seventy percent is what we're asking for an increase, and we feel that we can at least start the projects with that. We're not going to finish those, but that hundred and eighty-one percent is just too much, we feel as staff to ask. And so for the purpose of this report and our preliminary recommendation, we're looking at seventy percent, but that still leaves us sixty-six percent short on the projects that we've identified. And then if we were to do the hundred and eighty-one percent, you'd see the revenues there would go from one million to eight to two point eight, two point nine million. And what that would do is essentially balance out our cash flow, not put any into reserves, but that would just balance the cash flow. So we feel we would need to look at the project list again and see what we could do on seventy percent. We know that that's an extremely high ask, but here again, if we don't, we're just not going to be able to do these projects. So you will see that the inside corporate limit sewer rate would go from fifteen to twenty-five fifty, and the commodity charge per thousand for the business rate would go from three to five dollars, ten cents.
Chris? Tom, I mean, when I look at them numbers, that's a huge increase to the citizens of Rollins, total to the utility bill and whole, I got thirty-four dollars and sixteen cents total monthly increase. That's just for in-town residents, I mean, that's huge. Understandably why, I understand why it needs to happen. I heard the statement, it might decrease some cost for replacement of lines on some six penny projects, but I don't see where that would be the case. And I'm not trying to argue this or anything because you're the professionals on it, but the reason I don't see that being the case is because during the six penny, the vote of the six penny was not to upgrade any kind of utilities in the ground, so we would still incur the cost of that is where I see that. So the only savings we would have is repairing of the streets and stuff that's going to be involved in that, I believe. So maybe that's what you're thinking of in that aspect of things too, though. So there's several things with the sewer rate, Tom, that I think we need to really look at and consider here. And I think right now, we only have a, we have an industrial and commercial rate, or a commercial rate which affects industrial and commercial properties that are charged per thousand. Now, one thing I guess I'm not one hundred percent positive on, and this is a question for you, are they charged a base rate or are they just charged per thousand at this point in time?
They have a base rate for residential and just per thousand for commercial.
So commercial properties don't pay any kind of base rate and residential's do, but commercial properties are charged per thousand? Well.
No, commercial pays a base and per thousand.
A base and per thousand. So in thinking about that, I believe if for an increase of anything like this, and this is just my personal opinion, maybe we should tie a use to the residential rate too. And the reason I say that is because you might have your neighbor watering their lawn and someone else having more of a zero escape aspect of things, right? And I think they would use more water than, and they're using more of the sewer in them aspects than the neighbor next door, right? I think we could do that. The other thing is, in talking to other communities throughout the state, they do a different type of deal where we don't, we charge for one water meter. Yes, I understand the tap size and the usage and stuff on that, but the water's not constantly running through a two-inch tap, right? I truly believe the rate study on that side was not the greatest in the way we ended up going to that. I understand it increased, but I don't believe it was the greatest, right? And I think we should look at some other options in that too. We got instances where there's one building with eight, ten different businesses, right? They pay one sewer fee, one landfill fee, one recycle fee, and one water fee, and their water fee is due, is based on the rates or the usage, right? Per thousand, just like everyone else. But that in itself might help the funds, and it would be a fair charge. I've had multiple business owners come and talk and say how unfair they believe this charge is. It's not just that, but we have vendors that come into this town or are part of this town. They pay a fee for a residential water fee, right? They're residents of this community, but they use their business out of their home, food trucks. They don't pay any kind of commercial rate as any other business does, right? That's just an example. So I think we, as a council, should look at some stuff, maybe get some information from other communities as how they do some things, you know, and maybe look into helping ourselves that way too, instead of putting a hundred percent of this amount onto every resident of this community.
I have thoughts about that also. Like I do, one building has twenty businesses. In the past, I have really resisted business licenses, but the sales pitch there was, in the past was, well, the chamber of commerce needed to know how many businesses there were, which is exactly backwards, they should be telling the city. But in that case, where there are multiple businesses in a building with one landfill fee, one water, one, 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 I think one of the fixes would be business licenses. So that when there's multiple businesses in a building, they each pay for the landfill, I mean, because they're all using it. Another example would be, I have a home business, I have a home business license, and I know that I create more trash, I haul it myself and I pay by the ton and all that, but I know that I create more trash because I have that home business than just my wife and I would. So I think to cure a lot of the problems you're talking about, a good step might be for us to, you know, number one, business licenses. Number two, there should be a charge to each address, whether it has a water meter or not, really. I mean, they're using the services and, you know, they're at least using the sewer because there isn't forty feet of snow on anybody's vacant house. And so those are two things that I think might help not only raise revenue, but make it more fair across the board. Just my thoughts.
Yes, sir. Back to the comment of charged per address, or if you're an abandoned building and stuff, communities across Wyoming are charging a base rate for these fees for an address already. I've checked into several communities and they do do that because they do use the services of the police, the fire, the sewer, stuff like that. So they are charging a base rate. Prime example, Cody, Wyoming, they charge a base rate to an empty building. If they have eight businesses inside of one building, they charge eight different bills, utility bills. So if it's a space that can house eight, can house ten, they charge eight or ten, you know, and they can kind of protest, it sounds like, to say, I don't have those filled, but in their order. filled, but in their ordinances, if they are filled, um, and they're not brought forward to say, you know, we have filled these spaces or whatever, they have in their ordinance, they can go back up to six months to charge them individuals at that rate, right? So I think there's some things we can do in this aspect to help, uh, reduce the costs and increase the revenues, um, in, in a way that not all citizens are getting hit hard with this, so.
Well, and with that being said, I realize those kind of steps that I just described as well as Councilman Weisberg, those take a little bit of time. So what I'm thinking is we're going to have to, we're going to have to do these rate increases, but don't stop there. Go back and look at the rest of it and then we can adjust all that later because it's just urgent. Yes?
With the rate increases that you proposed, I know that when we had water restrictions, water usage went way down. These increases will also cause less, more people will use less water.
Correct.
It's just the way they will react to it. Have you considered that in these calculations or this is just, uh, with the water usage being what it is now?
This is just static.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we could have taken that into account, which we agree, but that would increase the rates even higher to make up the same amount of revenue.
Right.
So we think if we increase the rates, monitor it, see what the actual revenues are doing, we can come back to council with future recommendations.
How, how do we build the penitentiary? Do we just build it for one meter and just so much for-
You can hold that for-
Build who?
The penitentiary is-
Yeah, that's for one meter. It's a, a build up for one, uh, one ten-inch meter and, uh, and their usage.
So, because they're using a lot of sewer, a lot of, so, I mean-
But the ten-inch, ten-inch line is supposed to be designed to even that out. That's another thing we could take a look at in the future, but I realize there's an urgency now, but then I think we can get better at it by implementing some of these other ideas that we put forth. Councilman Weisberg?
One more thing, Tom, and, and, uh, I, I hate to even think this way too, but, uh, you know, it's not a fantasy if the line's going to break, it's a reality. And, um, if this don't get done and repaired as fast as possible, you know, the, the residents of Rawlins are going to be under a water restriction again due to the fact of, and the nature that will occur, right? And, and we as council, I'm sure none of us want to see this ever happen again, right? But when, in this, not knowing, we, we, we've been told multiple times, you have to help yourself, right? That's what the state has said, but when in this do we throw our hands up and get in, in contact with the governor or DQ and the EPA and say, we can't do this, right? We, we cannot afford sixty million dollars. I mean, we're upwards of sixty million dollars in repairs in sewer and water total. This is not a reality that we can face. When do we do that?
Well, we've done it.
We have.
About four or five times.
Yeah, but when, when do we save enough?
We've had, Honorable Mayor, we, we've had several discussions with legislators, the governor himself. Um, we, we do believe that we, we will receive some help from there, but that's just a belief right now. It hasn't materialized, but I can, I can tell you with our needs with that, that even if we receive substantial funds, that these rate increases are still necessary. There is so much. We are in a crisis. I, I don't know how else to say that. It's just, we, we are, it's, it's a matter of when.
Well, and if we had it all fixed, we still need to raise the rates so that we can maintain it at a higher level so we don't end up in this same position of degrading again.
Twenty years.
And, you know, I mean, I don't know, I, I don't know, we, the rates should have been raised incrementally through the years and, and Vice Mayor Sanger has an excellent idea of, of hooking that, all of our rates really to inflation so that, um, as time goes by, it just, you know, it's a little bit every year instead of us sitting here having to do this, and I hate this, I have to pay these bills too. But, but I really want to take a shower every day, you know? And that, that last time when we had no water, that was, that was, uh, we can't let that happen again. We have to do, we have to do what we can do, even if it's not the perfect thing, we have to do what we can do. That's where I'm at with it. Councilman Garner?
Sorry, I'm the Six Penny, I just wanted to clarify. I was thinking of, you know, the total cost of what, you know, the dirt work that you're going to have to pull on the road up and everything just to get in there to do the sewer and the water lines, just that cost. If, you know, I know they're not funded, but if we do it at the same time, that saving, um-
Through subtraction. You're going to use that money from Six Penny to do the underwork, and you could subtract that off of your Six Penny amount for the overwork because that, you're going to have to put that road back in anyway.
Yeah, you're going to have to do it. So if you do it at the same time, you're saving, and then money.
That's what I was thinking, sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted to clarify that. On the sewer, um, you know, we're talking worst-case scenario for the water line. If the sewer fails, that seems like a way worse situation than the water. Just, you can't, you couldn't even use water anymore at that point either, if, if I'm correct, right? You can drink it, but don't-
That's correct. That's it.
It is, the other thing is it's a low-flow system, so if it did break or collapse somewhere, it would completely take out roads. We could, we could probably get in and do some repair work fast like we do water breaks.
Right.
But yeah, it's really close to the sink, just not as much damage, and it would be kind of dirty for a while.
Well, another big thing too is if a sewer does plug up and flood somebody's basement, then we're looking at lawsuits and insurance, drought loads and everything else on that. So that's why the sewer infrastructure is so important. We try to identify as many as we can to see where the bad spots are, and then we try to keep it where we can service them. Like we said, we have a, we go where we find, we do a certain amount of areas every year for five years and we repeat them and then try to keep them clean, but we still have quite a few calls and unfortunately some flood basements and that's when we have the insurance problems.
Do we have, sorry, can I add something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is it just one main line that goes to the, the treatment plant or the sewer plant?
Well, there's actually three.
There's three?
Yeah.
So if there was a failure, it's not like, because I'm just curious, it's not like the, the water system, if we have the main line fail, you know, we're down, no water. If we have the sewer system fail, are those three lines redundant of each other or is it like, is there one that's like, if it failed, seventy percent of the city can no longer use their water?
That's the way it's set up, yes.
Okay, so they are-
We did have one, large one fail back in, I think in two thousand and one, and, uh, we ended up having to pump around the brake for three weeks straight, night and day, till we, we got it repaired.
On, on those main lines, um, in the study, how, how bad are those three lines? Are they in the, we need to replace now or are they in the, um, you know, we got some time with them?
I think we have some time with the main lines. One of them is coming from the pan. The one that, uh, one of them, we did quite a bit of work on on Murray Street and Cloverleaf, so we've got a large section of that one replaced. And the other one on South Side is still pretty good shape. They're pretty good sized, strong clients and it's the smaller ones in the residential areas that are the worst ones.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I would like to point out too with the Six Penny projects is, uh, where the city didn't bond, we can only do those projects as the money comes in over a period of decade, so.
And inflation's been a factor.
And so we're going to only be able to do half of them just because of inflation, number one. Number two, they, they have to be done as, as we collect the money, which that really slows that down, so it isn't going to be like we're going to be out doing a bunch of them at once. I wanted to clear that up because there's a lot of questions out in the community about that, but we can only do them as the money is collected. And I think when it started, it was to be collected over fifteen, sixteen, or twenty years or something, and it's coming in faster than that, but still, uh, decade, you know, it's, it just comes in way too slow. Vice Mayor Sanger?
Tom, um, when, on our, the scenarios that you gave us, the ninety-two percent, the seventy percent, the fifty-six percent, the USDA has a requirement of a percentage for us to be even, able to get a loan. In, in each one of the scenarios, does each one of the scenarios allow for us to go and get that loan or do we, is one of them going to say, you can do it here, but you can't do it here? You can't do it below that?
Correct. Honorable, yeah, Honorable Mayor, Councilman Sanger, the USDA has a, uh, amount that they want us to charge of one point five eight percent of adjusted household income. That's their target, okay? And if we were, with our average household income in Rawlins is just over seventy thousand dollars per household, we'd be looking at about ninety-two, ninety-three dollars, if I recall, in a water bill. They have said to us through discussions that if we are making progress to that, we can be considered. It's not like, you know, it's, it's a guarantee. And so in our scenarios, we feel that that is making progress towards that, um, but we, we would still have to have those discussions with them for sure as to what the rate would have to be to get their funding. But the ninety-five percent would be right at, essentially, right at the, the rates that USDA would, um, require us to, to bill.
And that's, that's the first one? The first scenario?
That's the first scenario. So if we were going to be in total compliance with USDA, but they have said in our weekly meetings that if we are approaching that, so we feel on our end that this is a good step, we'd have to see if it's acceptable to the USDA.
All right, we're approaching the end of this workshop so we can take a break. Is there any last minute questions? Well, thank you, Tom, for all your hard work, and thank you guys for your hard work on this, and, um, we'll have to go home and read this and consume it, and, uh, it's, uh, it's a lot of really good numbers, and thank you. It's, it's just something I know myself, it takes me a little bit to digest it. So we'll, uh, we'll have this at the next meeting, I guess. So we'll be in recess. Thank you.
Yeah, but I'm saying that Six Pennies can cover the top.
Yeah.
And they've, and they've calculated the cost. That's a part. Right, so this is through subtraction, you subtract the top, and that will change the number of a given water project or a given sewer project because it's hundreds of that top, which you're raising Six Pennies. And it was two point, yeah, we've done the engineering on, and so we have the engineering side of that. It just, it's because they let them do that subdivision with the drains. Especially, especially where you're building a city, you look at that, if you go stand up on top of the hill without the sheriff's truck, and you look back, you can literally see the two, and that's the bottom where it comes into the drainage toward the sheriff's truck. You can see the slope either side from the, uh, baseball fields to where, where the movie theater's sitting. You can literally see the curve.
Our sunstone turned on. They've literally burned it to forty-seven degrees. They were all, they all were sunburned.
There's, there's one of those, uh, there's a couple of them, there's a sun there in the corner, right there, it's on the city, but it sits in the corner, and you'll see a telephone that sticks out and it's got a power box on it, but it doesn't look like it goes to anything, it actually goes to pumping, that pump, and it's just, that's just how much water, and you look, and you stand on the hill and you look back that way, you can see that that's where it's all coming, and that pumping all that water all the way and where it's to the other side of the Glen Edition, all the way over to the sheriff's truck. Yeah, that's how far that water goes, it goes a long way.
Just connect a little, not the office, but the baseball fields.
So one of the things I, I was thinking about this the other day, if we, so they're working on spring pumps, right now currently three spring pumps feed the entire city. We have twenty-four, yeah, okay. Let's say you fix them, now on the flip, twenty million gallons.
The amount that they said that we should have.
Okay, so then all of the other lines and stuff to other parts, because you told me you don't have enough water, you're trying to supplement the water, so that become, would be a point, because you're more than a quarter of what anything anywhere will need. So there's no point worrying about running water from the cars. There's no reason to.
You should save all that.
That's for the, that project is now-
Washed, yeah, washed, ported.
It just started.
So now you don't do it.
Yeah.
So you're not going to do that for now.
That would be huge.
Right, so take that and then, and then go, you, you look at a-
Do you have a question for you after?
Then we don't have to worry.
Okay, absolutely.
This crazy-ass thought that we, if, if it's all things being equal, we should receive twenty-four million gallons a year, or twenty-four million gallons a day.
Yes.
Spring and all, and up to sixteen, fifteen million gallons during the winter.
Yes, sorry.
That's five times as much water as we could possibly use. So we aren't, Rim Lake exists because we would zone it with water in broken parts. What if it's intentional? What if we say, okay, we're going to go, because we have one mine, to the south of that is the bottom of that block that belongs to the BLM, that's the bottom of the mine away. Well, that's all downhill. So if you start at the road and go all the way to Mount Side, and you dam that across and say all the overflow, every inch of the river does come down our pipe, doesn't go out, the overflow's to the spring pumps, no more, mm-mm, that's nice. You're right, but it's intent is just, we would end up with ten years of water. It'd be a lot of square, yeah. So you'd end up with this big old lake, it ends up being a destination place, the highest outside, and take your cattle and go out in the morning, go back to your home, and you can strike. It's just a benefit of part of the project.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
It's just a benefit of the other side of that project.
Right.
But you would end up with ten actually, it would love you, you'd need heat to, you'd like your little dryership, because you just have to store it, just, and you'd have to group up, because that would just be necessary.
Does that mean this-
Well, then if you end up running the waters, you just-
You just put an overflow.
Hey, I can call Charles, I don't know if he'll see you picking up yet, go by the house.
What? I guess you don't have any.
Uh, how much you need?
You have such a huge, and you would literally, you would have to run a lot of water, literally be hard to save.
Okay. Okay. Well, let me ask somebody in your kitchen, you want me to call somebody?
Right, so it's.
Okay, hang on. Are you at the house?
We would just overflow it.
Okay, all right.
It's pressured.
Text you, let you know, because the meeting's about to start in about a minute, okay?
Once it pressures up that line, it just starts pouring. And then we'll put them in the gas tanks. And then you can come in and get some of the aquatic space that you created. For us, it's storage. For everyone else, it's a break. So you predicted, and I had said this a time about it, and then we were, oh, we went to man. And he remembered the guy, and he's like, they think they're right. Why can't it really take like fifty years to come in? They said, well, you have a right, they're doing it now. And you're doing it now, you're doing it because it's broken. Not because you planned it, but what if you inherently just planned it, and that's what we're in store for? In this moment. And, so. No, 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 there are replacements, it's the same.
It's ready?
And so those, even, sorry. Those slant for this.
Yes, they're, that's all, that's all paid for, and they're doing those blocks now.
When I left that office, that, that, um, they were doing the engineering side of it. It didn't sound like it was gonna start.
No, they've already done the engineering. They, they should be underway.
That's.
That's, yeah. Okay, what are we doing?
Join the meeting?
I'm not joining, I'm just, I'm gonna undermine that, right? I just, you know, yeah, people need to be aware of what it is.
Right, and I, and I misspoke the first.
No, no, you're fine, that's why I thought it was like the coverage of the roads and stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Because that's the, that's kind of, that's the big cost.
It's a big cost.
All right, I will call this meeting to order at seven thirty-two. Would you guys please join for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Terry Wykam.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Council, Councilmember Bruce Seelaw.
Here.
Councilmember Jacqueline Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the April second, twenty twenty-four city council agenda as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the April second, twenty twenty-four city council agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. I would, um, entertain a motion to approve that. Uh, Councilman Newellis?
I move to approve the consent agenda, April second, twenty twenty-four as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda for April second, twenty twenty-four as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is public comment pursuant to resolution number two C dash nineteen ninety-six. It sets a time for public comment of five minutes for anything that is not on the agenda. Is there someone here that would like to address the city council at this time? Seeing none, I will move on to the next item, which is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee appointment for the youth member. Councilman Wells?
I move to appoint Sophia Johnston to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for the sixth to eighth grade youth term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to appoint Sophia Johnston to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee for the sixth through eighth grade youth term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Is Sophia here? Would you wanna come up and tell us why you went on that committee? Don't be scared. Absolutely.
Hello, I'm Sophia Johnston.
Do you guys have any questions for her?
Sophia, I just wanna thank you for applying for this Recreation Advisory Committee. It's a very important thing that you're doing, and it helps us guide our, uh, our Parks and Rec Department. So thank you for applying. Okay. Thanks. Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, thank you, and thanks again, Sophia. Next thing on our agenda is Planning and Zoning, uh, item. Uh, Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to accept Punita Mayberry Naves resignation from the Planning and Zoning Commission effective immediately and direct community relations to advise, advertise the vacancy.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to accept Punita Mayberry Naves resignation from the Planning and Zoning Commission effective immediately and direct community relations to advertise the vacancy. Is there any discussion? The only thing I wanna say is thank you for being on that board. You were very valuable, and you still will be, but, uh, I just wanted to thank you. Uh, is there any other discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is DDA Main Street and Hub reports. And I will turn the floor over to Executive Director Pam Ther.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Good evening. So, um, first quarter has been super fun and super crazy. I'm gonna go to the hub first. We have held, um, already in the first quarter, a Start Your Own Business class that had about three people attend. That was a snowy Thursday, so that was that one snowy Thursday we had. Um, and so Jim Driver made it over from, uh, Albany County, but we didn't have as many, we had originally had ten signups. So, um, he's slowly getting in contact with those people who were not able to attend. We've also had a business boot camp, um, two weeks ago. On Thursday, we had sixteen people. It was over four hours. We held it at Fire Station Two. Thank you, Alan, for your expertise and letting us hold it there. Um, I can tell you, it was in conjunction with the Startup Challenge, and we had a gentleman who has, um, gone to two other business boot camps in Sweetwater County and Yewinta County. And he almost, he lives here, and he almost didn't go, um, but he thought, oh, what the heck, I'm gonna go. And besides, he's a finalist in the Startup Challenge, so he little egged him on. He said that out of the three he's attended, that this one was by far the best one. The agenda was great. We had Kylie Waldrop do the attorneys. We had, um, Tim and Cassandra do the legal. Um, Jim Driver did the marketing. It was four hours of packed information, and it went extremely well. We did record it, and I'm getting the recording cleaned up, so we can actually, I've already had two people call me and say they'd like to listen to the four hour recording. And we, so we had over sixteen at that. Um, I've had ten walk-ins already this quarter of people wanting to start businesses. And then we held a government contracting class last week, and that's one of the sheets you have in front of you. And this is super, super important. Um, government contracts are an amazing way to diversify your business. We had three people at the, at that lunch meeting. But what I wanna talk about real quickly is the government buys, whether it's the BLM or the Sentinel Project down in Cheyenne, or, um, whoever the feds wanna buy products and services from. We have been designated the City of Rawlins, the governor designated the City of Rawlins as a hub zone, which means we actually, if, um, an individual with services or sells product, they have preferential, um, treatment to get those contracts over people that are not certified in a hub zone. So that is diversification. And so I put together, it looked a little different, that was on the website, it said, come join us for the meeting, but now I've, now I've kind of changed it and said, if you have questions, Drew from Casper will definitely, um, help and talk you through, there's certain contracts. So we were talking at the meeting last week. So the Sentinel Project, which is the, the, um, project that's happening in Cheyenne, they don't have enough plumbers and people to bring out buildings. And so, an example, we had a gentleman who owns a business here in town at the meeting who builds outbuildings. And so he could actually go through the process, become a certified contractor with the government. And let's say he would put a contract in for two hundred buildings, and someone who is not a certified contractor in a hub zone, like Rawlins is, he would automatically get that contract. So it's an amazing opportunity for our Rawlins businesses. It lasts one year, our certification as a hub zone, but we are already talking to the governor on, well, actually, I'm already talking to the SBA about how we continue that. And so how that would work is we'd have to be authorized through the, our, the next census. We're also looking at trying to get the whole county certified. So again, this is just another way for our businesses to be certified. So it would be federal contracts. When you go through and they look at getting ready to award, they look at, are you a veteran? Check. Are you a woman-owned business? Check. If you're a small business, under Nexus Code, which is North American Industry Certification Code, it's how you corrugate businesses, um, if you're a small business, check. And then the hardest one to get is if you're a hub zone, in a hub zone, and this is, this, it's done for us. I mean, the governor, for one year, any business that wants to become a certified government contract can. Now, I can tell you that this paperwork and this packet is huge. I have some of these pa, you can go to SBA and get it, but, I mean, it's, it's, it's not without pain. And they were very upfront about that at the, at the meeting last week. But we had two individuals, one's a service provider, and one actually builds product. And they're interested, because when times are, are quiet, or things are not maybe as busy as they want, they'll get dinged if there's a government contract coming up, and they say, oh, check, check, check. He gets the contract, so, and there is preferential treatment. So I think it's super important, we're gonna really, Drew is gonna be here from SBA on Friday to meet with me, to meet with one of the people who couldn't come to the meeting last week. And then him and I are just gonna sit down and continue to talk about how we could continue, um, being designated a hub zone. So, super, super exciting for our, um, Rawlins businesses, and hopefully we can get it for the whole county. Um, Startup Challenge started. We have five finalists, um, that are working through business plans. They're already getting ready to get their pitches together. And that pitch night will be on May fifteenth, so about six weeks away, at the Parco Theater at six PM. So love to have all of you guys, um, for pitch night. Um, and so, yeah, hub has been super, super busy the first quarter. Um, the other thing I have is, and I'm getting more copies for you, is the twenty twenty-three Wyoming Business, and I'm gonna wear my Business Council Board of Directors hat, um, but, but all, all economic development. We do have our twenty twenty-three annual report out, um, that is very interesting. It talks about how we're focusing on housing and resources and determining constraints in a community. Just had a whole work session on that. So I will get one of these and get these to Lynn, Lynn, and she can get them for, into your, um, boxes. And then the last thing, you know, that other job, that, uh, DDA job, um, we, I gave you guys a handout. We are in the, planning the first three events, which would be Plants and Pots, which is gonna be, um, a new little fun twist on Arbor Day, um, April twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh. Learned that Arbor Day is always the last Friday of April. And so there, the, we had two downtown merchants, Plant Haven and, um, Marge at Red Desert wanted to do an event, and so they came to us and said, yes, we will do the advertising. We will work all that, the, the assisting, and you guys run with it. And so, you know, anything green and earthy and just fun, have food trucks on Friday night. And then Saturday have some classes and different things happening for that. And then you can see up in the top right corner on your, on your, um, sheet, that it says, save the date for Super Saturday. That is just a fun day calling Downtown Clinic Day. But it's amazing how many more people you have when you call it Super Saturday than it's Clinic Day. All in the marketing, guys! So, and then, of course, the last thing is, and super excited, is Adventure Fest, AKA, used to be Summer Fest. Um, and that'll be on the twelfth and thirteenth of July. We have so many partners already. It is, we have a car show, a bike show, a Jeep show. We have a fly fishing company coming from Billings, Montana, that's gonna do fly fishing things. We're gonna have the CDT people come and set up a booth, and they're gonna have backpacks, and you get to fill them and feel what it feels like to wear a backpack walking the Continental Divide Trail. We have, I can just keep going. But, um, it's all about adventure, it's all about doing things. I'm missing a ton of people that have already stepped up by, but we're gonna have a climbing wall. It's gonna have five different spots, so the, the big activity for kids to do would be a climbing wall, but, so get that on your calendars, too. Just another day and lots going on. Any questions? I will leave, I'm gonna leave this up at the front desk or out, which is more, but you guys, again, this is an opportunity. You know, not every county, not every city in Wyoming is considered a hub zone, so. Okay, thank you.
Lot of good stuff, thank you.
Yeah.
All right. The next thing on our agenda is City Manager Report and Staff Reports. I'll turn the floor over to you, Tom.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. One staff report that, um, we'd like to share with you tonight is from our Public Works Director, Cody Neal. We, we felt that, at this, this point tonight, that there's several projects that we would like to update you on, so.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I just, with the, talking the water rates in our city, just wanted to give you kind of update on the design projects that we have going still right now. Um, the first one is our Davis Street Extension. Um, we've got the final reviews of the drawings on that that we're going through. Everything looks great on it. We should have final design, I'm hoping, within the next month or two. So that, that should be completed for design. And then we'd be looking for funding for construction, however we go for that, between grant or funding in the city. Uh, the second one with WLC that we're working on is the Glen Edition. They've got all the survey work done. I was just talking to Jason Myers today. We're just, uh, finishing up a couple of questions on how the system should look on the preliminary designs. I should be getting the preliminary designs on that probably by the end of April. Um, our Level One Master Plan is moving along greatly. It still, um, looks like it'll be finished up in June. So we'll be able to look at that, uh, probably first of June. And that has actually been helping us out with some of this, the rates that we've been looking at. looking at. Our next one is our SCADA. RFP went out, it was first published, what, March thirtieth, last Saturday? We currently have five people interested in bidding on it that have called in so far. Let's see. We will be doing a pre-bid April thirtieth, and then we'll be looking to award a bid by May twenty-third. So we should know by May twenty-third who we're gonna be using for our SCADA system. As far as our water, so we have talked to WWC and having them work on a service contract for our blow-offs and cathodic protection to give us, to start some design work on that, to try to get some work going by the end of summer in hopes that we can get some funding for this. So hopefully, pretty soon, I'll be, we'll be bringing a contract in to have you guys look at, trying to move that design forward. Our Sage Creek Basin Junction Boxes, RFP, is completed. We should be putting it out to publication probably by April twentieth. So it should be going out this month. And then our coordinated projects with YDOT, the Higley Underpass Design is almost complete. They'll be letting that for construction bids November of this year, twenty-four, and looking at construction of summer of twenty-five. The other project that YDOT we're working with is kind of an emergency project. It's the Third Street Retaining Wall. And this summer, they're gonna come in and do some reinforcement banking in there, just as preliminary. They're looking at doing a Third Street rebuild, and I think that's in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And so they're gonna complete the whole restructuring of that wall at that date. So those are the projects that we're working on. Our in-house projects that we're working on is our water treatment plant. Crews are working on rebuilding all the pumps and motors at our Miller Hill Booster Station in anticipation for good flows this year. And we are also replacing one of the pumps in the pretreatment plant to get good process out of our pretreatment in case we need to use it. And those are the projects and designs we're working on. Any questions?
Lot going on. Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Cody. Appreciate that.
Okay, Honorable Mayor and Council. I have a few dates for you for special council meetings and budget, preliminary budget and those types of meetings. We had our work session on the water sewer rates previous to this meeting. At the April sixteenth, regular council session for a work session beforehand, we will do a review of all of the rate increases that are proposed during the work session. And then we will ask for approval of all rates at the April sixteenth meeting. I am happy to make myself available for any questions that council or anybody would have. Just schedule a time, and I'm happy to go over those. On the preliminary budget, what we are proposing is a special work session on April the eighteenth on a Thursday night, starting at six o'clock. And what we will do at that meeting is, is I will, I will share with council the preliminary budget for the general fund. We will go over the departments and all of the needs and the proposed revenues. And then after that, on April twentieth, the Saturday, we propose that we hold a special meeting to finish that process that we started with the general fund. The April twentieth meeting on the Saturday, we will hold that at the Hampton Inn, in the Cowboy Room and the Wyoming Room of the Hampton Inn.
What time will start?
That would be at ten is when we will start that. And we will just go until we get that finished. So that'll be the preliminary budget. On the strategic plan, on the council goals, our plan right now is to have a work session at the May seventh, I believe, council meeting, the first council meeting in May. We'll have a work session that we will go over the plans that are the goals that council set a couple of months ago when we met. There are still two sections on that that the council has not covered yet on that. But we will do a work session at that time to finish that process with recommendations and the goals. And then we will present that to council at the second council meeting, regular council meeting in May, which I believe is the twenty-first of May. We will bring that for final approval at that time. The first reading of the budget this year, we would like to hold that work session on May fifteenth. And that'll be a Wednesday night here in the council chambers. We would start that at six o'clock. And at that point, we will go over the preliminary budget that we had, whatever changes at that point, you know, the direction that we get, will be in that. That, that may be a lengthy meeting, just because what will hit on every budget thing. The second reading of the budget will be on June fourth at the regular council meeting. And usually, at that point, what is presented is whatever we changed or recommendations, direction we receive in the first reading. So we think that we can handle that during the actual council meeting. And then the third and final reading of the budget, we have scheduled for June thirteenth in a special meeting here in the council chambers at six o'clock. And with it being the third and final reading, most everything will be in at that time. Hopefully, we just go over whatever changes from the second reading, and that's approved. So, so that, so that is our plan with the rates, the strategic plan, and the budget readings. Going forward, we will go over this at future meetings for things still in the future. Just a couple other things. Our annual maintenance with the ravens at the landfill on limiting the population will begin on Monday, April fifteenth, is when that will begin. We have began the, the process now of estimating how many ravens are on site. We believe there's between a hundred and fifty and two hundred ravens right now on the landfill site. But that process will begin in earnest on Monday, April fifteenth. And then the last thing to report is the golf course will be opening on Monday, April fifteenth, weather permitting. But we're hoping that by the fifteenth, we'll have the greens uncovered and be ready to go. So that's my report.
A lot of meetings.
It's a lot of meetings.
Yeah. Budget time's always a lot of work. Thank you. Anybody have any questions of Tom? Councilman Eisenberg?
Yeah, Tom, the raven poisoning that has done, how is that gonna be related to the community? When that's starting and the possibilities of what could happen?
Yes, we, we have communicated with some of the residents in Highland Hills. And that's kind of where we're at right now. We, we, we look to advertise that in the, you know, the local newspaper would be the other way to do that, maybe an ad or two on the radio. But we, we definitely want to get it out that, that that's happening, so.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Yes, sir.
On the raven issue, does anybody, is there a reason we have so many? Because the transfer station Dirty Boys runs, they used to have an issue with ravens all the time. Once they put the big garage doors on and started locking that thing down every single night, our raven, like, I don't, we might have one or two out there now, but unless they all migrated over to the Rawlins one. But do we, my question is, do we, do we close? Do we have doors that stay open twenty-four seven? Or are we?
Yeah, it's wide open, twenty-four seven.
Do we, is it, do we lack doors? Or can we close it at night to?
No. There is no doors.
Oh, there isn't? What, what's the cost to us to run this program? Is there a cost that we pay out?
I don't believe that there is a cost. I, I don't believe so, but I will, I will check. It is an effort with the game and fish and other agencies. It's a combined effort.
Since it's an issue, and I mean, and I might be, Patrick, you might be able to speak on this, once since the doors were put in, we, do they have ravens out there anymore?
We have zero.
So would that, I mean, to stop doing this every single year, would that might be something we could look at? Maybe, I mean, maybe we can't put doors on, but if we could, that'd be something we could look at doing?
I'll try to talk for Lou. I know that in, with that building, they're having issues with structural stuff, so I'm not sure if the garage door sizes will hold up to the structure that's there right now. And I'm not sure, on a size of garage door like that, I'm not sure what the cost would be. That's a pretty big door, and there's three, four bays, bay doors in there. So I mean, there would be a pretty big considerable cost to doing that, but it may help.
Okay. I was curious if we had them or not, so thank you.
Okay, Councilman Eisenberg?
Gonna speak to, I, I, I don't believe there is a cost associated with this that the city incurs also, right? The other thing is, is even in the industry I work in, the ravens have populated ridiculous amounts, right? And at the Rawlins landfill, we don't just have a transfer station there, but we do have a C and D area, too, that, that I'm sure that they pile up on also. So that could be a big difference that you're seeing also throughout the whole thing. The Rawlins landfill takes in a lot more than just MSW.
Anything else? Okay. Do you have anything for us tonight, Punita?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. I don't have any legal updates tonight, but if there's any questions that the council would like to pose to legal, I'm happy to collect those questions and follow up on anything that you would like followed up on.
Seeing none, we'll be moving on. Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is direction from City Council to City Manager. Is there anything? Councilman Gardner?
This, earlier, we were talking about the six penny. And it's been discussed a lot. You know, we're not, we're not moving projects. Our costs are going up. I think, was it two years ago, roughly, we had the resolution where we could use the unrestricted funds to put projects, you know, start the projects and then pay it back as the, as the money came in. Is there, what I don't want to see is this inflation keep going up, and we have less and less projects get completed. Because we're still gonna, we're gonna have to complete it because it's gonna come out of the general fund. Or, you know, it's, it's gonna hurt us if we don't get these things going. Is, would the council agree that we should try to knock a project out as soon as we can if we do have funding that we can move over to from our unrestricted? And then have it paid back? Or in one other, one other solution I've seen in Cheyenne, they had a resolution, and I'm, I wish I would have brought the document and to share with everybody. What they were able to do was, if I remember correctly, they took a loan out and paid that loan back as their funds came in. But they were able to do multiple projects at once with this big loan and then pay it back with the, as the funds came in. And then I believe the general fund covered the, the interest rates so that, you know, that, it wasn't, because those, because those want to be covered under the six penny, so.
Normally, when a six penny tax is passed, the town bonds. And that means if there's twelve thousand dollar, twelve million dollars of the projects, they get a bond for twelve million. They don't pay interest on it until they draw on it. In other words, if they don't draw on it until the project starts. Our city did not do that. So to go back and borrow money now would limit our, the city can only borrow a certain amount. Once we're capped out, we can't borrow anymore. If we borrow money for that, then we won't be able to borrow money for the water line. I believe I'm correct. And so if we could turn the clock back and bond, we could have done them all at once because we'd have all the money at our access. We'd just be paying interest on all of it until, as that money came in. But that isn't what happened, and that was, you know, long before I was here anyway. So I think that answers that.
Councilman Eisenberg?
Yeah, I, I don't believe I would be opposed necessarily to using some general fund money if there is any. But at this point in time, I don't, I don't believe we're gonna have any, you know, and speaks with the city manager on that, those subjects. I think at budget time, we'll be able to maybe see that and maybe come up with something we can possibly do. The other thing is, is with the six penny projects, you had said, we're gonna have to use money out of the general fund to get those done. That's not true. The problem is gonna be, we don't do all the projects that are on that six penny project list. We are not required to do all projects. So that's, so you, you'll have an understanding there. We're not required to do that. So just so that's clear.
No, that, yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah, it's not, not a good deal. Yes, ma'am.
Is there any way to take the, because I know we have to do, if we do a project, it has to be according to what was presented to the voters. Any way to take that back to the voters to change it?
No.
You can't ask them to change it in any way?
No.
We've already taken.
No. It's a done deal. You know, they, they voted to do certain things a certain way, and you just can't change it. You know, if, if it, you know, if it says fix roads, you can change it from this road to that road, but that isn't what passed. You have to go to the language of the, what the ballot question was.
So out of the list of projects, if we never get the money for one project, where's that money go?
What do you mean, where's it go?
You can't do the project for that amount of money.
Not, not at that base point that you're talking about. You can dedicate money from a project you're now not going to do to that project. So if you, if you have ten projects, but you can only do five, the bottom five leave, their money goes to your top five.
Okay.
If one's twice as expensive as it was projected to be.
So at what time do we look at the list of those projects and narrow them down to what we can do? The money that we have and the inflation that we do.
Well, we do the next one. And then the next one. Yeah. We just go down the priority list, and when, when we get enough money to do the next one, we do it. Somewhere in there, that six penny thing will have run its course, and we will have gotten the amount of money we voted, the voters chose. And then, from then on, it's over. And that's one of the problems with those six penny issues is if, is if you set them up for ten or fifteen, twenty years, you're kind of dooming yourself because you can't do anything new for that long. And if you don't bond, inflation eats you up. And not a good thing, but that's, you have to play the cards that were dealt us. So that's where it's at.
Councilman Eisenberg?
To speak to that, too. We, we went through the list prior council. I don't believe this council has to prioritize. And I, I believe we could probably relook at some of that, too, if necessary. But the, the other thing that happens, too, is you might, you might not spend all that money on that, those. But the, the other thing that happens too is you might, you might not spend all that money on that, those six penny projects because we might have a million left over, right? And we can't do them all because we don't have enough funds. But that goes, i- i- if I'm speaking correctly on this, I believe it goes to a fund and they have to be used for maintenance on those projects and stuff that was done, if I'm not.
If we get them all done and have money left over, you can't take the leftover money and go do something else. You, it does go into an O and M situation for the projects you did do. Does that make sense? That's not gonna be our problem.
No.
You know, that's not gonna happen to us unfortunately. All right. So next thing on the agenda is approve the minutes of the council meeting. Would entertain a motion?
Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to approve the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four regular seat, really, regular city council meeting minutes as presented.
Second?
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four regular city council meeting minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing, Councilman Weisenberg?
I, I believe I was not present, right?
That's why it's not here.
Yes.
Hold on one second.
It's, it's, there's just several of us have missed.
Any further discussion?
You're good, or would you like me to? Okay.
Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with four yays and three abstains. Three abstain with Councilmember Wells, Councilmember Weisenberg and Councilmember Lumen.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda is, uh, another set of minutes. Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to approve the March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four special city council meeting minutes as presented.
Second?
Been a motion made and seconded to approve, uh, March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four special city council meeting minutes as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yays and one abstain. The one abstain was Councilmember Wells.
All right, thank you. Uh, the next thing on our agenda is item C, uh, twenty, uh, a catering permit. Councilman Garner had his hand up.
Move to approve a twenty-four hour catering permit for Christie's Incorporated, um, doing business as Michael's Big City Bar and Grill, liquor license number ninety-one to cater the, um, oh, I should've read this before I put mine in. Tris Munce concert at the Town of Sinclair, Parko Sinclair Historic Theater, Sinclair Wyoming, on Saturday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Catering permit will be for the Town of Sinclair Recreation Center located at five oh two Lincoln Avenue, Sinclair Wyoming.
Second?
Been a motion made and seconded to approve a twenty-four hour catering permit for Christie's, doing businesses Michael's Big City Bar and Grill, liquor license number ninety-one, to cater the Tris Munce concert at the Town of Sinclair, Parko, uh, Sinclair Historical Theater, Sinclair Wyoming, on Saturday, April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Catering permit will be for the Town of Sinclair Recreation Center located five oh two Lincoln Avenue, Sinclair Wyoming. Is there any, uh, discussion? And I will tell you that I, Michael called and apologized that he couldn't be here. Um, he was asked, uh, kind of at the last minute to do this, but he has a, uh, server that's, uh, having a baby at the moment and one of his cooks is too, so he's kinda got his hands full, or he'd be here. So with that, Councilman Weisenberg?
Only thing I wanna say is thank you to him, uh, and his staff again for always coming early and finding the, the way to get that done. We've had several incidences where it's a last minute type thing and I appreciate that.
He, he was concerned with that also because he was asked, somebody else was gonna do it and then, then he was asked to do it and he didn't give us as much warning as he would like to have, but I told him it was fine, it got advertised, everything's good. Because he has been really good about it, you're right.
Okay, uh, open online voting?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yays.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is executive session. Councilman Wells?
I moved to enter into executive session at eight fourteen PM per Wyoming statute sixteen four, four oh five, to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law and to consider the appointment, employment, right to practice or dismissal of public officer, professional person or employee or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person or officer unless the employee, professional person or officer press a public hearing. The governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during the examination of a witness, any or all witnesses in the matter being investigated. Following the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in the executive session on matters concerning litigation to which the governing body is party or proposed litigation to which the governing body may be a party.
Second?
Been a motion made and seconded to go into executive session at eight fourteen PM. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, open on, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yays.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, and the more we get, people sign up, the more, and so we're saying, then let's keep us as a. Yeah, exactly, it was, because it was last week, yeah. So it was like, it was, um, let me do this one, sorry, yeah, just make this one, but, yeah, it's. So what I did is I showed up for the one that said join for last one, cut it apart, I put this on, I told Drew, I go, do you know your, why are you creative, the like lunch thing? He goes, yeah, I go, I cut it off, I put your information on the bottom. He goes, okay, that works, so, yeah. She does, yeah, the first section she did was his, um, um, graduation. No, they couldn't, okay, yeah, she actually Scott just got for the, um, school facilities commission, um, state. I call it a commissioner thing now, it's kinda funny. People's like, yeah, I think there's, there's Cheyenne, big meeting, commissioner there, it's like stock. But he had to do a headshot, and so Cindy just did Scott's headshots for Cheyenne, yeah. Perfect. Yeah, perfect. Your what?
My nerves.
Your nerves? You guys did fantastic, Scott's, Scott's writing moderator, you know, Mr., you can take the banker out of the bank, but you can't take the banker out of the room. And he was like, I'm shocked, because I was downstairs, if there was gonna be overflow. And then Meyer said, there's nobody down, I said, there's nobody down, so I came upstairs. So he was, I talked to him, he was, he was on the road coming back from Laramie, getting a meeting with Game and Fish. And, um, he's like, I don't think I'm gonna make the six o'clock meeting. And then I walked in and he was sitting there, I'm like, oh. Well, and the thing is, Scott was the state USDA Rural Development Loan Director in Colorado for six years. So I sent this, I took Austin over and over and over. Scott said you can totally use him. So he, I mean, yeah, so, I mean, you have.
Can we hire him on full time?
Part time, he's got cows to take care of, but, yeah.
Summer time, no.
Well, but he, you know what, his girlfriends, he gets tired of his girlfriends, not, not, they talk back to him, but not like I do. I said that one day, they're like, where's Scott? I'm like, oh, he's out with all his girlfriends. And they're like, what, I'm like, the cows, ew. What's this? Oh, your head. Yeah, yeah, like, what's going on? Yeah, yeah. Okay, so my phones are still out at the building. Hopefully culture are gonna fix again, but it's on the, the city, this side. Um, and then tomorrow, um, I'm here, yeah, but just to let, I can just try to keep you, tomorrow, um, I am here in the morning and then I have to go to Laramie to see if I have surgery on my finger. This is kind of my, yeah, swollen, I'm trying, that's all I can do. December sixth, and so he will be, no, it's just all from December sixth. What? I did not, but I ruined my ring on this. I think the reason I didn't ruin it is because of three bands, because they could not have the software at the hospital that I'm at. And now I haven't taken it down to get it fixed. It's square, that ring is square because I hit so hard. Anyway, so tomorrow, I'm gonna have to, I'll be down here in Laramie. Well, and I've been trying to come over on Tuesday mornings, but that building has been so busy and with nobody else, I have to have it up. Like today, I printed big twenty-four by thirty-six pictures and then I was running. Yeah, so I had thought, okay, good, I can finally come to a meeting on Tuesday morning. Steve came over on Friday to talk to me, um, about all things on our agenda for DD's next agenda. I had seven people who walked in and he just sat there and he's like, I feel like I'm watching a tennis match. And I said, it's great, it's great.
I'll get you all, our group, our department head group is gonna do a book study.
Oh, we are? Oh, good, I'd love it, I'd love it. What's the book?
Culture, something culture.
I'm very excited, I love it. I have it in, I have it in four different books, so I, oh, and then you'll decide.
Our, our software project, I wanna start with culture. Because if we don't, we're not gonna be successful. So we're actually gonna do three different groups of three different books, but department heads will be one of them. So I'll give that to you.
Okay, I love that, yeah. I just, I like, I mean, it's great that it isn't so busy, but I'm like, every time I think I'm gonna be able to come over on Tuesday morning.
Yeah, it's busy.
Yeah. So I should have one more thing, so I don't know, I know you've been busy with this, so I knew I would care for you, but I thought I touched this here, Thursday or Friday, it was Friday, I was like, for you. Okay, so we need to get this business council extension in?
Yes.
And I have a draft of it.
A very extension, yes.
Yeah, I think I heard this morning, she sent me. Heather, it? Trevor? Noel, Bree? Okay. Okay. So I told her, because I didn't know if I was gonna have time to reach out to you guys, so I'm glad she did.
She sent me on yesterday, I did chapter yesterday afternoon, for a voicemail, she and I spoke this morning. So she sent me out the documentation and then she and I talked and she let me know what I need to do.
Okay, and if you need any help, because I have all the ones that we've written for the, the city already. I already have a template that's been approved by legal. And it's actually probably in our main five. So I had just taken that one and just tweaked it a little bit too. Um, so I was looking at the dates, it needs to probably be on the sixteenth agenda.
It has to be, yes.
Yeah, it has, it has to be at our board meeting on this, on this, on the, on the. Oh, that was quick, the rest of them were slow, oh. So, yeah, because Neil did Noel tell you that, because we wanted it at our board meeting, that's what, at the end of the month? Yeah. Just hold on one second, I gotta. Okay. I'm glad Noel reached out to you. And I told her, I said, I just don't know when I'm gonna get over there or get it done. And she's like, so I said, just reach out to Tom and a little bit. And I wanna be careful because since I sit on the board, I don't want there to be a conflict of interest. Yeah, I mean, I won't be able to vote, because, well, we were talking, she was gonna check with our attorney, our business attorney. All people to vote on the extension most likely, but I still didn't want.
Yeah, I think there's, I think it's close enough.
I agree, I agree. But you can say you like, yeah. Oh, there's that, that was a quick one.
Yeah, I'm just.
Same thing Tyne said.
Time out.
You're in touch.
Time out to hang out with you guys.
I love that, Tyne is in timeout, Daryl's in timeout. You know, some of these, you know what, what I like is, I used to tell the kids all the time, Daryl, you said you were going at it? I'd go, stop! And they'd look at me and I'd go, mom's going to timeout. They would freak out, they're like, why are you going to timeout? I said, mom needs a timeout. And I would literally go sit in the chair and they're like, oh, stop, we don't want your timeouts. It worked every time, when I said I was going to timeout. I'm like, gosh, I should've tried this years ago. I don't even know what it was, I got it off of some like podcast or something about how to, how to change the kids, you know, you can try that with, you know, your kids.
I'm gonna try it with my kids.
Try it with your kids, it's amazing, their, their thought process like, wait, you guys can't, you can't be in timeout.
I can't wait for Ari to understand because she is a moody child right now.
Is she, she's six months old?
No, ten, she's a fireball, she's every day.
She'd be ten months old.
I think, so, yeah, because May, May twelfth is her birthday, so she's almost. No. How's your, me, little addition?
You have a new one?
Yes, it was a long labor for mom, but they're both doing fine and he's just a cute little girl.
Awesome.
Little cute one of this size.
Yeah, I'll, um, I might swing by, um, this week.
Okay, so Drew's gonna be there on Friday.
Friday, okay.
So if you actually call him. So if you actually call him, I think he's meeting with somebody that's at ten for about an hour. So he could actually, he's coming, he's going to Rock Springs and then coming back to Laramie. He could meet with you.
Yeah, I might do that.
You would be a prime for services.
Yeah, I was, when, when you start, when you start talking about it, when I read through it, and then when you start talking about it, I was like, that's, that's pretty awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you didn't even think like, okay, so, I mean, if BLM is going to, like, the last time they came down, um, Deb and I, I'm way back, you know, with Scott with the. You actually said on the thing like, never. Deb said she came into Rollins, this is before we were listening, this was like a year and a half ago. And there was a fencing company that was doing a fence outside north and she was coming in. And the fencing company was from Utah. And it just drives her crazy when she sees a federal project being done by someone out of state.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, but with the feds, it's all over, so there's no preferential, there's no state statute because it's the feds. So what happens is once you get designated through the governor or through a hub zone, you're designated a preferred contractor. Then they can do that. And then I did believe it gets dicey, but you can actually, so let's say you put in a bid to do some IT work for the BLM up here, okay? And three other people do it and they're not, they didn't go through the certification, you automatically get that.
That's crazy.
And then I'm talking about if your bid is ten percent higher, just because you're hub zoned, you're a small business, you get, then, then they actually, um, give you like, if your bid's ten percent more, doesn't matter, you still get it because you're hub zone certified and you're a small business.
That's crazy, that's awesome. And there's been a lot of little businesses coming in and starting up here. I mean, if, hopefully they'll watch or at least have seen this and understand it.
Right.
Because when I first read through it, um, I was like, well, it, I mean, it kind of makes sense, but when you explained the, in full detail, I was like, that's awesome.
Jonathan, I think it was Jonathan for backyard, pardon, I didn't say that. Jonathan Backyard Barnes was here at, at the meeting last weekend. He's like, so even if I don't go through the whole certification, you can go through the Apex program. And every time a government contract comes out, you're dinged out, so you actually get notification. Now, we did talk and it's like, I just don't know if I can do the paperwork. And it's like, well, I just want to build buildings. I'm like, okay, we need to find somebody to do the paperwork, but this is the thing, when you do the paperwork, you have to, you have to upload all these documents, like tax returns and stuff like that. And I said, so I don't know, if you get someone, you're going to want to get someone who you really trust or someone. He's like, okay, can I just hire you, because I trust you? And I'm like, okay. But, um, it was interesting because he's like, well, at least I get the, um, the announcements that they're bidding. I said, yeah, but Jonathan, really, I know you're an organized person, because of how you build and I've worked with them enough. I said, he probably will take you two to three hours for you to say, yes, I'm going to get those buildings at Seminole, those outbuildings or those bathrooms. And somebody else bids it and they're not a government certified and you're in the hub zone, you're going to get them like that. And he goes, no, I guess I should certify. Because he didn't say it in the room, but then as we were leaving, he's like, do you have a second? So we were just talking and they were, he, they actually ended up going into a private conference with another contractor who was at the meeting. And I said, Jonathan, I think you should do it. I know it's going to do work, nothing's for free, but you want the buildings at Seminole, you want the buildings on some of the, like, kind of the by trail, that's a federal trail. I said, there's things that we don't realize that the feds buy, that we're not getting.
Even the parking lots that they're talking about for the semis. I mean, you just make, I want it down and putting on asphalt.
Have you ever looked at the, like, the Wyoming list of, of jobs that they're looking for, for contractors?
Of course you do.
It's huge, yeah.
And then to have a, be a preference.
Yeah.
Ching, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's a good thing.
So how many hub zones are in Wyoming?
There's three.
Three, oh, okay. So, and then to stay as a hub zone, because you said it's for one year.
Yeah, it's for one year, so I'm going to already, I.
Do they always alternate them or?
No, it's actually off of our, well, what really helped us was, you know why how we became a hub zone? It's when Sinclair did their reduction.
Oh.
Oh.
That's how we became a hub zone, because of the permanent jobs that were lost. We went into that threshold.
Did, did you, I.
So.
Benefit.
Well, so, I mean, you can always, you know, me and my mother.
Silver lining.
Silver lining there, you know, yeah.
And a lot of those guys started small companies.
Yes.
There's a lot of.
Building crafts, they would be interested in that.
Yeah.
High desert.
Yeah.
Yep, there's, yeah, so I just drew, so, yeah, call Drew and then see, even if you just want to, because he's going to know the details better than I am. I'm just the thirty thousand, you know, let's, let's get, let's get it full, let's show the governor. But then I'm really hoping, and we had this conversation with Amy Leah, who actually from SBA, she came to the boot camp, but didn't come to the meeting last week. She's the, the big boss in Casper, or the big boss in Wyoming. Um, she was saying, Pam, the more you can push it and then we'll start pushing to see if we can get the whole county hub zoned. But if we can't, because Saratoga may throw off our numbers. I said, so this is the thing, I'd rather, and I'm not, again, when we were, Business Council had that, we want everybody to do well. But I don't want Saratoga's wealth over there and all the people that are coming in. Because the way, the governor wouldn't be able to approve us for a second or we have to go through the census track, which is fine, but we have to do some work to do that. So I want to do that. And so, I mean, Yvonne and I, well, I haven't talked to her about this because she was gone, but I, you know, if, I want to look, before we say we want the whole county, I want to pull the numbers.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to shoot us in the foot and say, oh, well, the governor did, you guys for a year. But when we pulled the census numbers, because once you're approved by the census numbers, we get it for five years.
Oh, really?
Do you imagine the business we could do for five years?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, me.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, really appreciate it.
Well, that's what I'm here for. So, thanks, guys.
See ya, have a good night.
You too. Stay, stay in time out.
I talked to the state, so, well, no, they sent me an email. Um, I wonder, would that email suffice for, uh, that documentation? Because it says.
Yes.
It says I need to, if I want to get the workers comp, then I need to send in a thing to them and request it, otherwise I don't have to do anything. Would that email be enough to cover the workers?
Send it to me, I haven't, I've been busy with turnarounds, but we got to your documents.
No, I'm not, I'm not even worried about it. I was just, I was just thinking about it because, um.
Is Mary Turner with corporate? She's who, I, I'd send an email to you and to her to see if that covers it. She'll let you know specifically what she needs for the insurance part.
Perfect, I'll send that, I'll, I'll send that over.
Okay, I've just been trying to get.
Well, you were gone for two weeks and you got a lot to catch up. How was the travel?
Um, I hate flying. Obviously flying, you know, in a sardine and it's packed and. Three and a half hours of just sitting with other people. It's like, eh, just want to get there. So, but I don't do the baggage thing, my baggage is with me, so.
That's nice.
It's, it's nice. And then I just get off and find my people and do my thing.
Yeah, I don't, whenever I get on a plane, I pack enough, I pack all the clothes that I need, as tight as I can and the one thing, I don't take anything extra, I just get it on there.
I know, and each airport has their own little thing. One is just put, put this in a, in a box and that in a box and, you know, you got to take off your shoes and all that. Then the other one was, oh, you got to take out your laptop, that has to be in a box by itself.
It's funny, why isn't there a standard?
Why is that? And she said, because they have better equipment.
Uh, oh, okay, I guess that makes sense.
I guess if they have super duper equipment, they can have it.
I asked.
This is, okay, yeah. We're talking about airports.
Yeah, I just realized that we all know that because we're often not in the basement. If you don't mind, I know that, so I was just checking.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I said, hello, everyone.
Hello, we are just waiting.
It's interesting on the six penny, um, it's too bad.
Yeah, we just, uh, got the unlucky side of that plane. Hopefully we can get a few projects like that done.
Maybe inflation will take, stop, go the other direction.
That never happens.
I know.
It never happens. It never goes down.
Who's going to lower their prices? Are you kidding?
Yeah, nobody's going to.
Gas prices do it, so.
Yeah, but I don't think gas price is ever going to a dollar a gallon again.
No. That'd be crazy.
Well, that would be crazy, it's a lot of gas, that's for sure.
We were, we were talking about that the other day when, um, my brother and I would go do work for my mom, the campground, we'd work for an hour to give us, I don't know, it was like four bucks each. So it was eight dollars, but we could fill up, we had a, a little one twenty-five forward, so we'd go fill it up with gas, I don't think it was like two, two and a half gallons.
Yeah.
It was, I think it was like eighty-nine cents, so we'd fill that up. We could get, we could get that, uh, each of us a twenty ounce pop and a candy bar. And it was less than five dollars. And told, my son got a candy the other day from the gas station.
Two bucks?
Three seventy-nine.
Oh, Lord.
Just a regular sized Snickers and I wasn't paying attention. So, um, you know, we got the drinks, he got one, his brother got one. Um, so we had three drinks total, two candies and, oh, and I think I got a candy. We paid, it was almost twenty dollars and I was like.
We're even going out to eat, it doesn't matter where you go, it seems like it's a, it used to be, you know, ten dollars a person, now it's twenty to thirty dollars a person. And you got a forty, fifty, sixty dollars, I mean.
Almost always.
Just for two people.
Yeah.
Doesn't count a big family, that's a hundred at least.
I, yeah, I could not believe it at the gas station, I was.
It's like, what happened? Yeah.
I'm going to read that email.
All right, I gotta get some sleep.
What time, what time do you head to work?
Uh, I wake up at four thirty's.
Oh, jeez, what time I go to bed? I always forget, I've changed my password here, can I remember it? If you ever can't remember your password to get logged in, you can log into Board Docs on your phone and go through the meeting that way, or an IMAD, if you, just so you know.
It's snowing.
Right now?
Yeah, it's snowing in my house. You know, it's like the snow. Oh, it's just, oh, there's bugs, all right. Camera shows me bugs. Bugs or not, snow. Yeah, anyway. Are you going to Pineville?
Yeah, yeah.
Looking forward to that, I'm looking forward to seeing Callie.
Yeah, I, the last time I was up there, I, uh, I tried to reach out to her, I went to their office because it said it was open, but they were all out doing reports.
Now I think she's the only one.
Is she really?
Kept one person hurt. I'm like, how?
That's rough, that's too bad.
It is, it's, it really is.
You ever see her videos and pictures she takes and puts on Facebook?
I got a calendar.
Did you? Oh, I forgot she's selling them, I should get one, I, I want to get one.
I, I love it.
She does a great job.
She does.
So how do we, you know, respond to this? I had that question, I should have asked that.
When do people have to, um, I have to be on the ballot? Is that May, is it deadline? Or is it April?
I don't, I don't. I don't remember what it is. I was talking to Sean the other day. They have eight, six or eight? People run for mayor, where he lives. The mayor's, the one mayor that's in, he's, he sat down, so he didn't put his name back. And he has, their deadline. He was a deadline for the mayor, that, that was already there. He had a deadline that was super early compared to everybody else to re-up, to put his name in the hat. And everybody else had a deadline, I want to say their dead, their deadline, their window is already closed.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, which, which I thought was crazy, super fast, yeah.
What city is he on, Nebraska?
What is that? Hastings.
Hastings?
Yeah, it's about twenty.
I saw it's moving to Grand Island.
Oh, so it's right closer, it's about, um, I think it's like thirty miles away. Welcome back. I didn't hear this call, no.
Grand Island's north and Hastings is south.
What's that?
Um, Grand Island is north of A D and Hastings is south.
Yep, they're pretty close.
Nebraska.
Nebraska, yeah, my son's in.
Well, that's closer.
Yeah, that's a lot closer.
Hi. Oh, man, okay, whatever.
Can you hold on one moment? I just have, I was speaking to the.
Yeah, you're going to wait anyways. Don't want to have to, but.
When you tell me when you're ready.
I'm waiting, I have this minute, so.
Okay.
We're too fast.
Okay, I am all set for the motion to be addressed.
All righty.
I move to come out of executive session per Wyoming statute sixteen, sixteen four oh, four oh five at eight forty-seven P M.
Second.
There'd been a motion made in seconded to come out of executive session per Wyoming statute, uh, statute sixteen four, four oh five at eight forty-seven.
Yep.
P M. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven eighties.
This. Was there anything discussed during executive session that anybody found to be improper? Hearing none, uh, we'll go to, uh, item C, which is approve executive session minutes, whoever was here March nineteenth.
I move to approve the executive session minutes of March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting as presented or amended.
I'll second that. Uh, the motion made, uh, was made in seconded to approve the executive session minutes of March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? See, yes, sir.
That was the 19th, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanted to disclose that during the review of the minutes, I stopped where it said I left the room and did not review the minutes where I was out of the room for that minute, just for disclosure, so.
Okay.
That's on the 26th. The 26th.
Oh, sorry, that's for the 26th.
You've declared, it's okay.
Is there any other discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
If you want to abstain, that's fine, but you don't.
Online voting is closed, a motion passes with three yays and four abstains. The four abstain with council member Wells, council member Weisenberg, council member Gardner, and council member Lumen.
Oh, wait a minute.
It's gonna fail then, so, there was four of you present.
I might have.
He was present for the meeting.
He was present.
Yeah, was, did I miss out the dates?
Yeah.
Okay.
The 19th is the one we're working on right now, which you were there.
Yeah.
Yes, and that's the one, so, and I think that's the one. Okay.
The 26th is the one that you read up in the half of.
Okay, so the 19th you were there, correct?
Yeah, can I change my vote to?
Yeah, so yay, okay. So.
Thank you.
The four yays, I have mayor Wycombe, council member Gardner, vice mayor Steiner, and council member Seelof. The abstains were council member Wells, council member Weisenberg, and council member Lumen, so the motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Chris, do you have a question?
No, he's, he's getting ahead of me. Okay, next thing on the agenda, oh, wait a minute, I gotta vote.
That's the next one.
Wait a minute.
Oh.
She's ahead of you.
Oh.
All right, hold on one.
Okay, that's Chris.
These things keep popping up.
No, that's the 19th. No, this is the same one, something, hold on.
No, it's, uh.
It's the one that we just voted on, and I might have hit the other button to redo, so, all right, so we are good.
Okay, councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the executive session minutes of March 26th, 2024, special city council meeting as presented.
Second.
Did you say March 26th?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I read.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, ju.
Yes.
So, so.
It has the 19th in it, but it does say special.
Just needs changed, I read the motion correct.
Okay. There'd been a motion made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes of March 26th, 2024, special city council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? Please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, a motion carries with five yays and two abstains, the two abstain were council member Wells and council member Gardner.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else that needs to come before this body? Hearing none, I will adjourn this meeting, the next meeting is April 16th, 2024, work session and regular council meeting starting at 6:00 PM. April 18th, 2024, special council work session starting at 6:00 PM. And April 20th, 2024, special council work session starting at 10:00 AM at the Cowboy Room at Hampton Inn, 406 Airport Road, Rollins. Thank you. Here's this.
See you.